Someone will have to do a little change.
Is that blood?
Jason coming, can I?
No.
No?
He's, he's missing.
Oh Nancy, I just realized it's in the size of your house.
All right, all right, we're gonna open the, I think we have a board of assessors meeting first.
Putting on the market in the next month or so. You're kidding. Well, she's got so much there, it's beautiful.
We're starting the meeting Rachel.
None of us want to live in York County.
All right, we're starting the selectmen's meeting.
You're talking from York County?
All right. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recover for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Love that echo. Okay, is, is Jim gonna be here for the assessor's meeting?
Jim is right here.
Okay.
Oh John, you look stunning.
Oh my goodness. What do you have on an Elvis hat?
My video, where'd it go?
Jim's here.
All right Jim, you're on, we're opening the assessor's meeting.
Is this your, uh, Little Richard invitation?
Hey, where is my video? Can anybody hear me now?
Yes, Jim, we can see you, we can hear you but not see you.
Okay, that wasn't me barking.
Yeah, there he is.
Okay.
Now we see you.
Start my video?
Yeah, never mind, you've got it, you're here now.
Am I here?
Yeah.
Okay, am I here? Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Jim.
Hi. Hi folks, are we into the assessor's meeting?
Yes.
We are, we are.
Okay, you had the agendas in front of you, correct?
Yes.
All right, we have one, two, three, four, five items to review. And I'll just start right off, we've got two abatements for this last tax season. One is for Mr. Reed Miller. He has a shorefront parcel down at the intersection of Dixie and Co- uh, Booke Cove. And this parcel, the problem with it is that, well, it's a shoreline parcel, he bought it, and unfortunately it has a giant lake on it, down near the shore, and it was assessed for a sewer system by Costa, and it's not buildable down in the shoreline section, it's buildable outside of the 250-foot mark, but it really can't be built on until you're back about 400 feet from the water. It's in a flood plain and it floods, and he put in for a, I asked him to put in for a building permit from Gary, and he did, and it got denied, he, he's, he put in to, put a structure down in the shoreline zone, on the other side of the lake, between the lake and the water, and it was denied, so on that basis I've reduced the assessment, and you can see the abatement amount there, the sum. Any questions?
I didn't know there was a lake down there.
Well, if you go down there, it's, it's a pretty big body of water, and he apparently really didn't look at this when he bought it, he spent a lot of money for it, but it's really not, basically it's a non-shorefront building lot.
Is that to the left, is that to the left of?
It's right after the old Fieral.
That's Henry.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's Reed Miller.
There's the log cabin, and then Steve Silverman.
Silverman.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's that whole lake westland area, to the west.
Yeah, I'm quite surprised that one of the land trustors never bought that, I mean, it's really a gorgeous piece of property down there, but...
Because no one's gonna be able to build on it.
That's right.
They've actually already.
That's right, so. Uh, okay, the next, the next one is Gary, and this is the Dudley Island situation, and I had raised the assessments, there's two lots out there, I had raised the assessments on both of them, but on second site, reviewing the one lot, the smaller lot out there, I've, I've set it back to what it was last year, and what I, having reviewed it and looked at it, I'm not satisfied, and with the assessment. And I'm calling it an error for the time being, and I'm going to go out there with Gary, and we're gonna go out and scope out Dudley Island, and see if there's an actual buildable spot on the one three-acre piece.
Does, does TJ think that it's not buildable?
Yes, he was told that it wasn't buildable.
Uh-huh. If I recall correctly, he went out there with the intention of having sheep grazed out there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's all clear for agricultural use.
Yeah.
And he, um, it is buildable, but it's not, uh, yeah, I am not, I am not deemed it unbuildable, not this parcel, it is buildable, it's just the assessment that I had on it was high, okay, for, for the site value that, that I think is there.
So what's the assessment now?
Pardon?
What, what was the assessment, and what is this?
It was at 20,100 dollars originally, and I had, I had moved it up, and I'm not sure I did it.
That's the taxes on it, or the value of the property?
No, the value of it, it was 20,100 and some. And it went from unbuildable to that, and then I did some research and found out some facts about that parcel, and I think the planning board has shared that with them and Gary, and they're working on, on correcting the status of Dudley Island in our shoreline zone ordinance. But that's a different story, even though it does the impact on this. So I had raised it up to like 68,000 inadvertently on my head, so I set it back to 20,000, which it was last year.
I'm curious, is there a way to tap into fresh water out there?
Uh, I don't know, and I, I, yeah, that's one of the things I, I wanna kinda scope out, consider, because there's no road out there, so if you're gonna build out there, you gotta carry everything out, on a barge or a boat, and I wanna go out and actually visit the island, see if there's a place even to land, and all stuff over there, you know, and if there is, what, what cost would something like that, you know, be, yeah, I had a case like, a couple cases like this in other towns, so I need to go visit the island, see what's possible.
Isn't this the island where at one time, like back in the Civil War, the Revolution, or whatever it was, that was, there were people living out there?
I believe so.
I, I thought it was that island.
Yeah, I believe so, it's, yeah.
Jim, Jason has a question.
I thought you couldn't build on an island Jim, period.
No, that's not true Jason, that's a mis- that was a, that's a misstatement.
Come on Jason, get the murder out, for God's sake.
Um, there's, they, they had a, they had a, they had a, a, uh... Let's put it this way, there's a statement in our shoreline zoning ordinance that needs to be corrected, all right, and the planning board is working on that. Relevant to islands. And the attorney has advised us, and Renee can speak to this, that the condition in our shoreline zoning ordinance relevant to islands and the ability to build on them is probably unconstitutional, and certainly looks like a, an illegal taking of land, and, and as much as the citizens of Lubbock might like to enjoy island businesses without any structures on them, the, the citizens cannot take other citizens' land without due process, they can't just come to a town meeting and say, "We don't want anybody," and go building on an island.
So, so Jim, um, so Jim, this is, this is just for this year, so whether, so if things change and we, we update the shoreline ordinance zoning or whatever, and they can, and make it buildable, then you would reassess it properly, so this is for what's happening now?
Well, yeah, yes, yes.
So this isn't forever?
But I, I, I have no problem assessing it, because I believe that what the attorney told us was that it has value, and it's, it's an illegality to take somebody's land without due process.
Well, definitely.
So...
I don't think taking other land has anything to do with this, this particular meeting, does it? I mean, we're just talking about assessment.
This is just background, or on my, my journey over to Dudley Island, okay.
We'll get you over there somehow, we'll leave, we're gonna leave you there too, no, just kidding.
Oh, come on.
And don't forget to TV your mileage there though.
That's right.
Yeah. Uh, the next one, advantage, that's just simply due to building, taxes were paid, this parcel was transferred, and there was two undeveloped interest owners, otherwise known as tenants in common, and one of their, one of their bills slipped through, so we took it back. The next one, Ms. Simmons, uh, this mobile home has brought to my attention, it, it probably wasn't worth $38,000, and you all are aware of where this mobile home is, right? Can you hear me?
Down, down, down on water, uh, down on...
It's the blue trailer behind the red house, down at the...
Beside the old garage lot.
By the old garage. So we're near to my attention, and I lowered the assessment down to about, I don't, around $6,000 from the 30,000 where it was, somehow, I, I had never assessed it before, so I don't know how all that happened.
There was previously another, a different mobile home there, they got moved.
Yeah.
And they didn't notify us.
Yeah.
Right, mobile homes are like musical homes, musical chair homes, you know, you never know what you're gonna get when the music stops.
Hence the term mobile homes.
Really, no.
So what's the next one?
Okay, what it was is we made a, an error in the original abatement, which was supposed to be 444.97, and somehow my eyes crossed these figures, and it, and a 477.06, so to correct the error, I had to, I had to rescind the earlier abatement. It's a technical thing.
Which, oh, oh, you rescinded the 477 and made it 44, is that like a negative?
Correct, and just a switch, yes, just...
Okay.
Same, same, same mobile home.
So we're actually only giving back four figures tonight, right? The first four, not the last one?
That's it, the first four.
So do we have papers to sign? All right, we don't have any further discussion with island, entertain a motion to sign these abatements in these first four, and then the rescind, rescinding one.
I move that we sign these said abatements.
So for this, for this meeting, we'll make a motion that I can sign it, if you wanna all put your names on this.
I would say, and move the fact that none of us are there in person, Carol should sign it.
We do have another select board.
Of course there is Jason there.
Jason has snuck in the back door.
She is all good to sign it.
So, yes, but no, if you wanna have your names on here, you'll feel welcome to come up tomorrow and sign them, we'll get them today, so we need a motion to sign this warrant either today or tomorrow, I need a second.
I'll second it.
That's not a warrant, it's an abatement, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
All right.
All right, so Jim, we'll have these up here for you.
Pardon?
We'll have these up here for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I just find out, can I find out if Sonia is on here? Sonia, can you speak?
I'm calling it Sonny.
No, I'm looking for Sonia Bailey, thanks Sonia.
I'm right here.
Okay, thank you Sonia.
Sonia. You're gonna hide now.
I'm right here.
I just wanted to make sure that that's five to zero, and it is. Getting awful quiet Sonia.
Thank you.
I only see four...
I'm taking it all in, I'm not missing anything.
I only see four, four things, four things to sign, Jim, so, one of them, the, the rescission, the one you rescinded, that, that doesn't have to be signed?
Uh, I'll make up a signature page and circulate it to you.
Okay.
If you like.
Well, it's, it's up to you, I, I don't know what proper procedure is, you are the assessor's agent.
Yeah, well, see, you never signed the original one, oh, yes, you did too, you did sign the original one, the first one.
Okay, so you probably need to have it signed that one.
Yes.
To be signed, okay, can you?
It's the wind I guess.
Got a ghost in the house now, so we'll make a motion to close the assessor meeting and open the select board meeting?
So, I would...
Rachel move, Sonia second?
Yep.
I need a motion to sign the warrants.
I move that we sign the warrants.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Need a motion to approve the minutes, Dan?
Where's Dan?
I don't see Dan.
He's gone, he's not, oh, he's been muted.
Oh, I didn't do it.
You're muted Dan.
I'm muted.
Dan, this is your big, this is your motion anyway.
I've been called for 59 years, I'm muted.
You're making a motion to sign, approve of the minutes?
Making a motion to sign, uh...
Approve the minute.
The minutes of April 29th.
Second?
As written.
Very good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing no opposed, I guess we'll sign the warrant. You can come up tomorrow anytime and sign these papers for us.
Okay.
I don't think Jim Hire made it.
Does he have to be here? All right.
Oh, that's him.
Did we get the, that warrant? Yes, yes. All right, next, Water Street Tavern Restaurant, Street Gathering.
Oh, was that my baby?
Was that?
Yep. Okay, well, as I mentioned last time, I was interested in talking to the restaurants down on Water Street about the possibility of opening up at sometime later in the summer, when it was okay for us to socialize and blah, 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 blah. And I, everybody that I spoke to, that was Wanda, Jim, Gail, who else is down there?
Gail.
Toehills.
Toehills, yeah, all, all the people, okay, and they all agreed, they were, they're really for it, the whole thing, so I talked to the state, and the state said, "Absolutely, we can do it, we can," and sent me the, I mean, I got the forms off the website, and there are a few requirements that you outline on the street where they're going to have to go, and people cannot go from one to another restaurant with a drink in their hand, there is no smoking outside because it's essentially being inside a restaurant, um...
So who's gonna monitor this Rachel?
My question.
Who owns the restaurants?
So they should be the ones, other than us closing the street, I think that they should be the ones to get the liquor permits, not us.
It's not a liquor permit, they've already got the liquor permit, they don't do that.
Not to go out in the street?
No, I have got the permit to use the outside, it's a done deal, they do it all the time, one of the things that the guy mentioned, and I've forgotten his name, is the new Sweden days, and he said they do it all the time, they just get outside, it's a wonderful thing, people will socially distance, everybody's happy about it, the only thing I did suggest to them is that they have to come together, make a decision as to when it's going to be, and let the public know far enough ahead of time, advertise it, which is where you'll come in John, and make it happen, all we have to do as a select board is to arrange to have the street closed down after 5 o'clock on that particular night.
Is this, but is this form from the Bureau of Alcohol and...
Yes, it is from the Division of Liquor Licensing and Enforcement.
Which, we'll have to modify our liability before we can sign something.
Sure, I'll bring all that stuff in tomorrow.
Sounds good, thank you for all that research, I did speak to a few of the owners of, actually I spoke to Ellen, and Gail, and Wanda, and they, they were on board with whatever they can organize, it was certainly a great idea.
So you did talk to them?
Well, one of them thought better of trying to move the tables down, it would be complicated, but I, you know, no, Gail was all excited about it, I'm sure Ellen is, and it's probably all gonna work out.
Yeah.
I don't know how many times, or how often, but I guess that will be, we should try it once and see how it works out.
I think it would be...
Yeah, I suggested to them that it could be done, you know, maybe once or twice a week, not forever, you know, it just, they're ready to be comfortable with, and I wanted them to...
Try it once and see how it works, if that works.
Together as a unit.
That's, that's why you wanna try it once and see if it does well, and then do it again, at first we need to check on liability.
Great idea.
Saturday night is probably the best, because you'll have Eric closed until Monday morning, and where it would be, School Street to Water Street, those two blocks, so that people could still drive down School Street and make a right, so it would just pretty much be the brewing company...
Water Street until you get to the brewery, you know, what, what's that street that comes into the brewery?
School Street.
School Street, so that, you know, is that, that part of the street? It's, it's kind of a no-brainer, it's not even, it's not intrusive in any way.
No, I think we just, as a town, seems for the town, and we're a municipality, and we're signing a liquor license request, we're closing the street, we need to check with our liability.
Correct.
So we'll take the papers to look at, that's, that's great.
Yeah, I'll bring a paper in tomorrow, and I'm gonna give papers to all of the restaurants so that they can fill in the particulars, and then of course, they will have to come back to the town, to the select board, and have us sign their papers.
So that's, that's different, if they all have to do individual applications of, as an extension of their own liquor licenses, that may eliminate, eliminate our, our town liability, so we'll look at the papers, and...
I, 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 I didn't mention this before, okay, done deal.
Thank you Rachel.
Okay.
Okay, Water Street Tavern Liquor License Renewal, oh no, where are we, Route 189, Bite Lane, Bit Award, we have not heard yet definitively which one they're going with, so we're, we're going to have to table that till next time. Did not hear, I spoke to them both today, and the bids are very close together, but there's a few papers missing on one of the bids, and they want that, they want those papers submitted, a few things that they had questions on, and when, if that satisfies the engineer's review, then I believe it's going to go to the lowest bid, which is right now handsomely, that, that there is a few requests that they haven't received, so they have not made a final decision. So we'll have to either wait for two weeks, or if it's, if it's imperative that we meet sooner, lock down a special select board meeting.
Okay.
Water Street Tavern Liquor License Renewal.
Is Jim here?
I don't believe, he hasn't changed anything, so...
I'll make a motion to accept it.
You have a motion on the floor, to accept it?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Not that Jim, different Jim.
Do we have a... Do we have a second? I'll make a sec, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And this is, this, you do have to come up, we need a blue pen, right, you do have to come up and sign this, we need all three, three municipal...
Okay.
And this is the one that's being blue inked, right?
Yeah. Is it mandatory that Jim be there?
No, he wouldn't be doing it if it was mandatory.
If you had questions, if you have any issues, then yeah, you could table it, but if you don't...
Where are we now? Appointment of the budget, Appointment Budget Committee, Nancy, is she here?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do, yes, we have three appointments, we are appointing Nancy Harrison to the Budget Committee, and we thank you profusely for volunteering, you may have second thoughts later, but actually it's going around, moving along smoothly, it's doing, we're doing better this year. Secondly, we have Suzette Francis for appointing her General Assistance Administrator, and we are appointing Renee Gray Deputy General Assistance Administrator. And so I need a second on that, I'll make a motion to appoint her. Who seconded?
I did.
Thank you Rachel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, any, any opposed? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tax acquired property, Renee, you wanna, do you wanna go through the tax acquired property for us?
Okay. We foreclosed on, actually three, I thought that there were only two, and then a third piece of property, but not real property, it's a mobile home, was also foreclosed on, they are in your packet, and, I'll try to find it, okay, so the first one is North Shore Road, it is a shorefront property, 5.3 acres, the total taxes owed on it as of the day we foreclosed was 3,536.47.
Where is yours?
Say that again, say that again.
3,536.47, that's for 5.3 acres, and that is...
Well, the tax map is right next to it.
It's all from the north, the back road.
It's gated, isn't it?
It's a gated, yeah.
It's got a gate in front of it.
Yeah. Oh, yes, I know that property.
All right, so, and the last time it was sold in 2014, it brought in $34,600, we need to come up with a minimum bid, if we're gonna put it to bid, we don't have to, it's our prerogative as selectmen to put it up to bid.
Yeah.
The next one is... Do you wanna talk to, I'd like to talk to one at a time.
What is it, I think a lot?
One at a time.
I would, I would think so.
008, 048, 001.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I would say 20,000 minimum would be reasonable.
Jason is suggesting 20,000, do we have any other discussions on what should be minimum bid?
Well, what was it purchased for previously, I think...
2014, they got, they received $34,600 for five and a half, 5.3 acres, and it's on water, right?
Yes, it's water.
But is it tiling water?
Nope.
No.
Not all of it.
Not bad.
Not all of it.
It is on the left though, correct, when you go up?
Yeah.
So, are we putting it out to bid?
Well, first, first we're discussing, do we wanna put it out to bid, and secondly, what do we put it out to bid for, so you're, you're.
Someone's making a water racket, I can't hear much.
Sonia?
Someone's wrestling cases or something.
Jim.
Yeah?
Yeah, you're making too much trouble, we might as well meet him, he doesn't, he doesn't do things. So, Sonia, you're right, let's make a motion that we put it out to bid and then we will decide the price, so we'll do it.
Yeah. Motion to put all three out to bid?
No, I wanna do one at a time, no. I might have one to bid tomorrow.
So we're deciding on a minimum later?
Well, we can do it all in one motion, make a motion that we put it out to bid for X amount of money, you can do it that way, is that better?
I'll make a motion, we put it up to bid for a minimum of 20,000.
Do we have a second on Jason's?
What was the?
What was the amount?
20,000.
Are you saying that's for all three of them?
No, we're talking about this one.
No, just this one.
One.
Okay.
Most of the minimum?
That's, we, we are determ, we determine the minimum, Sonia, do you, I, I, I'm a little guy, but I agree, we shouldn't give waterfront property away.
Is it inclusive of taxes?
It pay, that, yes, it would, whatever we bring in, we have to pay the taxes, so our profit would be whatever that is.
So the minimum bid is inclusive of the back taxes?
Of the back taxes, and I need to add that it needs to cover the 20, 20 taxes. We've learned that from.
25,000.
Yeah, so that's.
25,000 then, Jason, what do you think?
No, I think it's too much.
It's already been motioned and seconded, Rachel seconded it.
Nice going, Rachel.
Hey, no problem.
All right, so we could, all right, there's a motion on the floor to put out map, map of lot 008048001 for a minimum bid of 20,000, which includes paying all of the back taxes, which looks like about $4,500. Do I have, we have a second, all in favor? Crease says aye.
Aye.
Do we have other ayes? Say by, every, is there any, I, I'm gonna say aye, do we have a nay, any nays? Uh, it's, 'cause I can't, you have to speak, I can't see your hands. No, and so we're all good, five to zero to put it out to bid, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, let's go to the next one.
This is 1013 North Lubeck Road, I traced through the woods to find this one, it's a camp, I do have pictures of it.
I don't have an assessed value here.
Yeah, the assessed value is 111,217. There is 5.4 acres, it does go to the water, it has a sewer hookup for an RV that can dump their septic into, it has a well, and.
It's in rough shape though.
It's got a bath house with a shower thing, yeah, it's, there's, yeah.
It's a lot of east four.
But it does go to the shore.
What's on the general?
It's between a camp and.
Well, she says it's a camp, yeah, so, you know.
Road up in.
Renee took pictures. It's a long walk, she had to walk in because there were a lot of trees down.
I had to fly there to get to Nancy Briggs.
Oh, okay, so there, if you wanna see those pictures, it's, put it over there.
Yeah, what's the number?
Renee, Renee, put it on the screen.
What was the number?
That's the well.
0014036006, I'm not sure why it's assessed at $111,000, but is that the inside of it, or what's the other, can I see more pictures? You know, it's, it's deep cold water on the right side, it's all the way.
Yes, it is, yeah, and it's opposite side of my house.
Yeah. Anyway, it's hard times, so, yeah, oh, the inside is.
That's the bath house.
That's nice, I, I don't know what to say, I don't know.
Well, if it's got the same acreage as the previous lot, you said it's 20, but this has septic and water.
And it has buildings.
And electric.
And electric.
And it's assessed 8,000 more, the assessment's over.
How much more is it than you did?
I'd say, what do you think about 50?
I mean, yeah, it was assessed at 8,000.
We can, by the way, accept or reject all, all bids.
Reject, yeah.
So if you start too high, you might not get a bid at all, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, it's assessed at 111.
But if it's, it's the.
You do just see the pictures of it?
For 50 grand, right?
Pardon me?
It's a fixer-upper.
Yes, fixer-upper, so.
I think Debbie was.
Debbie, what do you think, Debbie?
She had it listed. At one time.
I'll, I'll mute Debbie. What do you think?
That, that lot is at least a $95,000 lot as it is, it's waterfront, it's.
And how long was it on the, listed and didn't sell?
That was before the market picked up again, so it's been, it's been a number of years since I've had it listed. And I think we had it listed at like 145 or something like that. But it does have power all the way down, it's got sewer, it's got electric, and, you know, the building went worth the whole lot.
Well, if we, we took off, well, we wouldn't have to pay a realtor for commission, what would you suggest that should be listed? Since we are trying to sell it as a town for taxes so that we can put it in undesignated.
Oh, that's right, because it will not have clear title.
Yes, what about?
I, I, I would, I would suggest when you have a nice property like this.
We're listening.
That, that you try to get them to sign it over to the town to clear the title, because then you can get more money for it.
Debbie, how many, how many parcels of land are left on that side of the road up by there, that, that's one of the only ones I know of.
Not much.
I, I think that's the last one, really.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
And that's yours.
You want, you wanna do something like 75,000 as a minimum bid then?
Because if somebody, it's vacant land, if somebody buys it, they can't get financing on it. So it's never gonna be sold on.
Well, not necessarily.
They can bring your camper, well, unless, unless they clear the title.
Excuse me, they can, they can clear title in five years.
Right.
Why is it, and why is the title have a problem on it now? She died?
They can mark the whole title in five years.
Well, many people buy tax-acquired property, smart people that have lawyers. So we're just looking here, we wanna put it to bid, who would like to suggest a minimum bid? And we, you have to realize that we don't have to accept the bids.
I think your 75 is.
Better?
Better.
Yeah, probably so then, if we don't get any bids, we don't get any bids, then we go, we go back.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, Jason's motion is we put it out to bid for 75,000, and just.
Second, Dan says second.
All, I assume that all is in favor unless, do we have an opposed, any opposed?
Don't like.
All right, all good.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a, a comment, this is Jenny. The ra, the ratio for the town currently is 81%. So if you divide this assessed valuation by 8.81, you come with a market value of about $130,000 for this property.
Have you been, when's the last time you went and looked at it?
This property? Oh, I haven't looked at it in a long time.
Well, so.
But, but the building is, you know, nothing to write.
It's all about the property.
It invites this because if somebody comes in at 80, we can still just say no anyway.
That's right. Start with something, encourage people to bid, is there, are there only two, is there another one that we don't have, I don't have one.
There's a third one that you don't have, and it is, right here, it's the dilapidated trailer, if you can recall, it was on the town meeting of August last year, Suzette had projected that we would foreclose on it, we would, we needed town permission in order to not foreclose on this dilapidated trailer, and the town did not vote that, they wanted us to basically foreclose on it and get rid of a potential problem in some way, so.
And where is this?
This is 103 Crowsnet Road, there's no land involved.
Anything.
It's just a old trailer. So.
Yeah.
We can try to put it out to bid if you want, see if we can get rid of it the easy way that way.
It's really pulling apart, right?
And if we don't, go from there, try to. What it, do, what is the back taxes?
So it was just, excuse me.
Go ahead.
It was just the trailer, not the land, right?
Yeah, just the trailer, what's the back taxes?
The back taxes are 710.92, and that does not include 20, 20s taxes, which is about.
Is it like pulling apart, like, is it the one right past?
Yeah, nobody's.
So it's the trailer that's in jeopardy, not the land.
Right.
'Cause the land was owned by somebody else.
Right.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if it's worth putting it out to bid.
No, that trailer's not.
I won't put it out for free.
Yeah, it sounds great, that's what we should do. Because it would, it would be great to just have it hauled away and get, get it, yeah.
'Cause it's gonna be.
Whoever wants to recycle whatever they can out of it and send it to China, they could buy it.
Yes.
And right up Jason's alley.
How about a motion?
Yes, somebody make a motion, whose idea was that?
Mine.
You can't, who's?
I'll make a motion, we give it away for free.
I second it.
So we're gonna put that right in your little paper that we have the free, the free, make sure you identify it right so they don't haul the wrong. Make sure you put a sign, you don't stake somebody on the trailer.
Just leave it down the end of the street. That happened to a car of mine once.
That was all in favor?
All, all in favor.
Why?
Ah, yes, no opposed, nobody's opposed.
That's it.
I think we put a sign though that says free on there, from the town and we're back, so they know which one it is. Okay, Rachel, and Jason, it's community cleanup weekend, May 22nd to 25th, do we have a motion to do it that weekend?
Yes.
Can everybody out on the beach socially distancing and picking up trash?
Yes, we will.
With gloves would be good.
And also Memorial Day weekend, and Dan seconded it.
All in favor? Those opposed, aye, those opposed?
Would we be able to have a big dumpster here? So Jason will bring a big dumpster here, people can do their roadside cleanup, if you can bring it, dump it in the dumpster. If not, leave it on the side of the road in a bag, and our public works Tuesday morning after Memorial Day, we'll go out and pick up the bags that people have collected if you can't bring it in.
Just put a free, just put a free sign on it. And Jason, I wanted to let you know that this week I'm gonna put the, the trash bins out on Water Street again, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
You got that, all right, next on the agenda is the Fourth of July, we've already made a deposit on our fireworks, I see no reason why we can't have the fireworks go off since, since we can socially distance in a car or sit away from each other, people pretty much stay in their cars to watch anyway. I don't know how to make a decision on the rest of the celebration, because I think you'll have to adhere to Governor Mills' guidelines. We're not east four, I understand east four's canceled their fireworks.
They did.
They have huge gatherings that show up, so we're gonna have to.
If you wanted out to the town like this.
Wanda, Wanda's here.
That's been seen, we cannot have people gathering to do a parade or games or any of that, that would compromise the distancing. However, the fireworks display would continue on, and I think that is the best compromise you could give anybody.
Now, Wanda's here, so let her speak, Wanda?
Fine, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the thing that we had discussed, I'm on the committee and Danny, is having maybe if we could still have the rubber ducky, that's not, people aren't that involved with that at all, and also the boat races, you know, there's not people on, you know, they'll be out in their boat, so they'll be socially distancing. And then with the horseshoes, by July supposedly we're gonna have the 50 person, and they don't ever have beyond 50 person, and of course, we're on the fall, Governor Mills presented about, you know, our guidelines, robbery, wear stoves. And another thing, Carol, at that time tentative, we don't know how much more she's gonna open, but if it came to a, a point where we could try to have a parade, everybody know how to social distance, if anything changes on that.
I agree, I think it's kind of up in the air, but we're definitely, it's, I just wanna make a motion and vote that we are gonna go ahead with the fireworks, and that if anything can be done on your committees as a social distance and safety, for safety, I think we will, if you can bring us back in more, you know, in another few weeks. I, I, I think that all sounds fine to me, do I, do I have a motion that we go ahead with the fireworks?
You did.
I made a motion.
Yeah, let's make a motion that we continue, we go ahead with the fireworks and the other events to follow.
Okay, thank you, Rachel, all in favor? Those opposed?
I'd just like, I'd just throw out there that Lubeck could be the only show in town, and might get a lot more than you have ever had.
Well, they're gonna have to wear ma, whatever Governor Mills says, but it is July is when they open up for 50.
That's Jim.
And it would not be time for the restaurants to come out on the street.
And food trucks.
I mean, who knows what we're gonna be.
What do you think about food trucks in town?
Let's just say, if things get worse and, and for some reason our numbers go up with the coronavirus, I still think we can have the fireworks, because you can socially distance. Give them something for the children to go look at.
Yeah, at some point, I think we should talk about food trucks in town, especially at this time, because people are, it, it, I'm not sure if it's a good idea.
We do not have zoning.
Right.
I know.
For food trucks, so.
We can't stop it.
If people, I think my, my personal opinion would be if you don't have a, if you have a problem with a food truck, don't eat there.
Yeah.
I don't think that we're going to regulate that, how, how do you feel about it, Dan?
Dan?
Yes.
Are you awake? Dan, your opinion on food trucks?
Well, right now, you wanna eat there, go eat there.
Yeah, I think that.
I mean, you know, they're, like it or not, eventually some ordinances are gonna start have to happening in this town, but I'm, I'm still got a bruise on both of my cheeks here, so it might wait a little bit longer.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that for our next, our next rodeo, right, Dan?
Yeah.
While we visit the facade ordinance, so, what was I gonna say? As long as it's not on, you know, our property, I, I mean, I wouldn't wanna see a food truck on the public parking because we need it for parking, so I guess it just depends on where they put the truck. If it does infringe on town municipal property, then we, I think we would have to revisit that particular truck.
Yeah.
Especially if it's permanently there, you know, so. I, I agree with you, Rachel, there's something to be looked at there.
Yeah.
Okay, we've already discussed recycling quite a bit at the budget meeting, but do you wanna sum up, basically it's reopened, it's reopening.
It opened this Friday, everything, and this is.
No mixed paper.
TV land, that we will be accepting everything except mixed paper, and I know people are, I, I, it's been all over Facebook, when are they opening, when are they opening, when are they opening? So hopefully, and I think it's on Quatty TV now, that it will reopen this Friday, so we'll get close to normal.
All right, so another business, we are opening up the municipal bids, I'm sorry, Dan, we'll let you open up the next set of bids when we're back. We have a great COVID-19 fund, we just found out from Mainco Saturday Trust are giving us $1,000 toward that fund. And I don't know what the total is right now, do we know, Renee, with the COVID-19 fund total, last we looked it was 6,000, right?
Did I just hear today that there has been one death in Maine with COVID-19? Is that verifiable or?
You mean today?
Yeah.
I, 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 I would look at working all day, I don't know.
I, I, I don't trust any news anymore, so I don't.
The total we have so far donated to the COVID fund is $6,800, and we have $4,000. The total we have so far donated to the COVID fund is six thousand eight hundred dollars, and we have four thousand one hundred thirty, thirty-nine available.
And we have another thousand coming in, so we encourage anyone who's struggling, who's a resident of Lubac, to come, and you can get a second voucher, either fifty or a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And. Uh, hopefully the COVID nineteen doesn't continue as they're projecting it may have a rebounding, so this, this fund is, I think, very well placed. And it's going to be continuing until the disease either burns itself out, or we get a vaccine, so that may be.
Did you vote on anything about recycling?
No, well, well, I guess we have to vote that, okay, we're voting on the policy on recycling, which is gonna be put on the board. One customer inside the center at a time, masks or facial covering required, no mixed paper, no e-waste.
Well, wait, that's up for discussion, what you guys wanna do.
Well, we didn't do the e-waste, I, I make a motion that we keep e-waste, because I don't want it on the side of the road, do we have a second?
Yeah, I think that's our choice. Do we, we take e-waste, or do we face it all over town on the side of the road?
Yeah, so I think we continue with e-waste, and recycle, a second, who seconded it?
Do you wanna second that, Rachel?
Why not put it in the trailer on Crowsnet?
Oh, yeah. All in favor?
Rachel, do you wanna second that?
Yes.
All, all in favor? Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Recycling materials will be processed after seventy-two hours, so Kenny's going to wait three days to touch that. So, um, so I will make a motion that the policy states, one customer, it opens May fifteenth, one customer inside the center at a time. Master facial covering is required, no mixed paper, and of course, allowing Kenny to wait seventy-two hours to process the papers.
You read that motion?
I made it.
I'll say.
Jason seconded it, all in favor? Aye, those opposed? I think we have come to committee updates, no committees will be meeting until June first, which we then can resume our committee updates.
Can I ask one question here?
Yes, you can.
I, I just wanna confirm, e-waste will be accepted, is that correct now?
Got the bids, forgot the bids, whoopsie, Renee went to the safe to get them, and. I'm sorry, John, John, what was the, what was your question, go ahead.
The only thing that is not accepted is mixed paper.
Right.
That's it.
Okay, I can.
So now.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Um. I'm, uh, who can, who can bring things in, I live in Treska, but I have property in Lubac.
You can, if you're, you could, we only take cardboard for non-residents.
She's got property in Lubac.
Oh.
Is your, is your, uh, cardboard from Lubac?
You can, Sony, you can bring everything in but mixed paper then.
Sure, bring it in, Sony.
Okay, thank you.
But even if it's, I don't have a.
But not from your residents in Treska, you can bring on everything that's related to your property in Lubac.
Okay.
But don't bring your Treska, well, actually, actually, we want cardboard, we want cardboard. Except for cardboard, right.
We don't care if the cardboard comes from Treska.
Everywhere it's cardboard.
Everybody's cardboard, and we love, we love your cardboard and your Amazon boxes. All right, I'm opening up the bid for.
Okay, I gotta say something here, now this band of bids that you just had.
Yeah.
Is, bids, our bids that came in today, the deadline was yesterday. The lady that does the bidding for this did see that until today, but we did not receive any other fuel bids, to my knowledge, so you may wanna open that pile first. And then you can do what you want, if you want to go with this bid that came in late, because we didn't get any other bids for those things.
Okay, we've got landfill mowing, we have airport mowing.
That's for fuel, correct?
We have, I don't know, it just must be. We have two airport mowing bids, we'll open those, the rest doesn't look like there's any other, oh, you know, competitive bids. So there you go, airport mowing, we just talked about the airport mowing at the budget meeting. So James Dover D., um, said that he would bid a hundred and forty-eight dollars each time.
Which ones is this?
Airport.
Airport. I don't know how many times is it, is it mass needed. Well, how do we know?
Who is bidding now?
James Dover D.
Dover D.
The other one.
James two, Gower D. James Dover D, okay.
Rick mowing airport for year, Down East Land Improvement, who is Morrison?
Oh, great.
Gray Morrison.
Gray Morrison, yeah.
Hundred and thirty-five dollars per mowing, for, for mowing. Who decides when it needs to be mowed?
They decide, and I'll ask me.
Okay.
Isn't there, isn't there a maximum they can have, right?
Well, there should be.
I've asked it, and it's whatever safe the land's gonna be.
Okay, but what is, we should say not to exceed X amount, and what's the most we've ever had, we get that in there for, how many, you don't know.
I mean, I've asked it, nobody, nobody answered.
Well, but you just have to look at the last two years. No, the last two years, and figure out how many times it was mowed, and then you.
It depends on the rain.
Yeah, yeah, you can't.
Okay, well, so, um. Without further discussion, who would like to make a motion to accept the minimum, the, the lowest bid of?
I, I would vote.
I make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I'll make.
Wait, go ahead, Son, Sonia.
I make a motion that we accept, uh, uh, the, the, the bid, Gray Morrison, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for, for mowing.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Rachel, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, municipal trash bid.
You wanna abstain?
He's just, he's abstaining.
So Jason's abstaining from this.
Even though he's, he's a little related to the person bidding. We have a municipal, uh, bid for no- so disposal, our bid will remain at a hundred and fifty dollars per month for. All the, nothing's changed, all the dumpsters, and then from May fifteenth to October fifteenth, Water Street, Three Canton Water Street, and what about the Marina? You do that one, you do, and then up here in the municipal buildings, there's dumpsters, so that's the same as last year?
Exactly.
So who would like to accept this bid?
I vote that we accept it.
Okay, second? Do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed, none, so it's four to one, one extension, four to zero. Now, we have vehicle repair bid. This was. It was from yesterday, it was bid. This is from Crawford Cory's Garage, from Randy Hall, and he's bidding, uh, repairs of sixty dollars an hour for labor. And if you have any questions, you can call him, and that is our only bid. Once you realize you can accept her, you just will take it, yes. Who would like to make a, a motion to accept that bid?
I, I make a motion that we accept it.
Second? Jason seconded?
I second it.
Oh, we got three seconds there, Randy, you, you, you're well loved, all in favor?
Almost a minute.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
I'd like to point out that we got two great dogs, they actually do spread it around.
I know, they've come and rescued me out of, in off-the-road tires. And always it's on, what, a holiday? This is for, um, sorry, landfill mowing, and it's been submitted by Gray Morrison, and it would be, I will cut the landfill twice. Once during June and once in October for a hundred and forty-five dollars each, so total two ninety. Who would like to accept this bid?
I would, I vote that we accept this bid.
So you make a motion to accept the bid, who wants a second?
I second it.
Okay, Sonia seconded, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now we have three bids from Dead River, and we have to keep in mind that this is the only bid, it was, we, we did get it today, but we'll read them. And see what you think, I'll do them all the same. Kerosene, uh, now, and what I'd like to know about, my question to you, Renee, is when they submit these bids, is this one of these pre-bid bids that if it goes down? We pay the same price as we're accepting, so I, I would love to know that.
It should say on the bid.
I would like to submit the following kerosene bid for your consider, beginning June first and ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty, uh, one, and June first. Supposed to be July first, is it not? We'll fix that, kerosene is one eighty-four seven, um, fuel is one fifty-four one, pretty good, and, um. Liquid, liquid propane is one forty-two two, they, they all sound pretty reasonable, do they not, Jason?
Yeah.
So, correct, with the correction of, the bid would start July first and end June thirty-first, they probably, is it June thirtieth? I don't know, how many days in June? Um, that that's our fiscal year, she can fix that, do we have anyone who wants to make a motion to accept these bids as written? With that correction?
Is this work, is this why they are charging us what they're charging us right now, I mean?
I don't know, I don't think so, uh, Rachel, because what happened was, we ran out, we, there was a certain amount of quantity that we got at that price, and then we got it as. You know, as whatever the going price was for that day, that's why it's different.
Yeah, well, I, I know that at one time, and I, I haven't kept up with this, but Foster used to have people, uh, call, and if one of theirs were a resuscitated. They would quote them a charge of oil at that time, and that's how you bought the whole year's worth of oil, if the oil prices went up, so be it.
Well, you bought pre-bid, you pre, it was a pre-bid at a certain amount, so if your usage was a hundred ga, a thousand gallons, then you would get so much for a hundred and fifty, one, a dollar fifty. So, you are locked in, so, I mean, if you lock.
To a price.
This doesn't seem like a high price to me, because it's, it's gone up, it's been as high as four dollars a gallon, so.
And that's locked in for a year, they did that.
So this is a fixed price, is that what you're saying?
I believe it is a fixed price, I don't know the gallon amount, so it's probably based on our uses from last year, I would like a little bit of clarification on this.
I believe the contract for last year was four thousand gallons, and the year before.
Okay.
For heating too.
Okay, so if we've gone up? So we have to buy the four thousand gallons, is that the deal? What if we only buy three hundred and fifty, so, do you want to, I, although, I make a motion that we accept this bid for July first to June thirty, these three bids. With clarification on amounts and set prices, so that we have, we come back next, in two weeks, and I explain what exactly this was.
I would second that.
So you're gonna accept the bid?
We're accept the bid with a condition that you, you explain.
Yeah.
You explain what's going on.
What if we explain it, you don't like what's going on?
That's, 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 that's a condi, the condition, we have to accept the, the, what you, what you let us know.
We have to.
You're not accepting it right now.
We have to accept what Renee said.
Well, there you go, well, we don't, we're not encouraging other bids to come in till we get this clarified, is what we're trying to say.
Well, we can't, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to table it, right?
We'll table it, yeah, we'll table it then.
Let's do that.
We'll table it until we know the amount. We know, we wanna know if it's a set price, what happens after we run out of the four thousand dollars, if there's more questions.
And we cannot take any of the bids.
It looks fine, but, and make sure you fix the, it's July first to do the bid.
Can we ask about overage, if we go over, there's.
We can ask that, we should ask that.
I, I think it's dicking time.
Yeah, cause it's ridiculous to get charged more if you go over.
Yeah, yeah.
There is no, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, motion to table, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to table the, the fuel bid.
I hope that we table this until we get clarification as to when, how much, where, yeah.
Okay. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're up to committee updates, none until June, we'll resume our meetings up here in June with social distancing, of course. I guess when we reach, we'll have to put the chairs six feet apart, and when there's no more room for social distancing, then you can't, you know, we won't accept entrance.
We could still do Zoom, and people can still participate from Zoom.
So that...
When did we go back to 6:00? I thought it was after the band was...
Well, with this COVID-19, we didn't wanna do it any later. If you wanna start in June, how about in June?
That's, that'd be up to everybody, I mean, I'm...
Yes. Jason brought up, who would like, you want to do the meetings at 6:00, and that's probably a good idea, starting in June.
Sure.
So the next meeting, we can do it again, if I were done with budget, we should be our last budget meeting anyway. And then we'll go to, when we meet back here, the first one in June, we'll go ahead and start at 6:00 again.
Okay, what date in June will I be?
I don't know. You know, the next one is May 27th.
Okay.
June 10th, my grandmother's birthday.
Now, we have had no nomination papers taken out of the school board. I encourage people to consider serving their community on the school board. We certainly have more papers if you would like to serve on the select board, and we also have a opening on the budget committee, and I don't remember the rest, and the wire district, so...
And I will tell you folks out there on TV, that I got drawn into it a few years ago by somebody, and it can be very rewarding to help out.
What can be very rewarding?
Select board, Jason was saying.
School, school board, select board, all of it, I mean, serve the town.
I don't think school board, I'd rather work for world peace.
It's, it's, it's just, just all of it, to help out your community.
But if you have children go, about to get entered to school, or children that have just graduated from the school, where you have all that vast storehouse of knowledge that you've acquired, it would, you would, as Jason says, serving on the school board or the select board is a difficult decision, but it's rewarding.
To help your community in many ways, reward.
Right. So, public...
Thank you very much, Carol.
Public comment? I don't know what to say about it. I thought I would be done, but now I, guess I'm running again. Safe harbor and all, what can you do?
John wants to speak to you.
I have a question for public comment.
Okay.
It has been widely reported that people are not responding to the request to answer the census, that it is not to be counted, and I would like to know, it's just from the select board, how this might affect our ability to attract grants in the future if we are on the move.
I'm not sure the percentage in, of the actual town of Lubec, but I know, I filled out my census way, a long time ago.
I think as soon as I got it, I filled it.
Yeah, I mean, the census was going around by mail before, way before the COVID-19 showed up, so...
It was easy.
People who did not fill their census paperwork out and have to be drawn, you know, by people knocking on the doors, that's where you're having an effect, that's the problem. The census worker has to knock on, and Rachel, you can speak to this, because you was, you did this, correct?
I worked on the census when it was done 10 years ago, and I do know, and you know as well, Carol, when you go for grants, they look at the demographics in your town, and if they, if you don't have, if you haven't answered all this stuff, not the demographics, or they're not accurate. So it would behoove people to get that census done.
How about if you don't fill it out, put your name in a hat and draw for a trailer?
How about we put them all on the trailer?
Dan, you've been stuck at home too long, you're overthinking things.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just hungry, I'm hungry.
I know, okay, I know that people in this town, I've heard it over and over again, love to say no to anything government. Their strongest feeling is to say no. Well, what they're doing is shooting themselves in the foot, so that would, it's stupid to say no. You gotta get this done. Give themselves a favor.
And John, you should put that, you should definitely have pep talk on the census. So as far, to answer your question, I do think we've had some community, we've had to do our own census for grants, so I don't believe it will affect our grants.
Yeah.
Because we have used other forms of, of surveys that they will take.
I contacted Nancy, she said it probably wouldn't affect the wastewater treatment plant right now, the grants for the upgrade, but it could affect future grants.
Yes, going down the road.
The reason I, it's statewide basis, it's been reported that somewhere around half have responded. I remember the information about Washington County or something in Lubec.
I don't either.
But if we're in that head of light, I agree with Rachel's point about shooting oneself in the foot, but I just, it's hoping to find, we have some policy to address this and some procedures to encourage people. It took me about a minute and a half to answer it.
I know, I know, well, one of the things...
If I could say one more thing, we are trying desperately to get broadband here, and one of the things that all the federal government is looking at are the demographics of this aerial area, and it's the rural, poor, and destitute towns, and they're the ones that are gonna be looking at us to say if we qualify to get some of these bonds things done, to get these grants done. So I would like it if people would get that done.
Well, I do have, I do have one observation.
That's the teacher in her.
I have nearly every person running for Congress, Senate, calling Trump, you know, Governor Mills, Eric Brinkley, you know, whomever, and never once have I gotten a cold call from the Census Bureau. So with all the cold calls we get...
You've got them knocking on your phone.
I think they should be getting on the phone and calling because certainly, apparently, it's a no-brainer, and...
Yeah.
Because I answer the phone, I usually hang up, but if someone says this is the US Census, please answer, I think that's what they need to do, and they have not done it, or we would've gotten a call.
Yeah.
So that's, that's their fault.
This week, door to door, they haven't done it because of the coronavirus.
But they need to use, they could do a robo-call and have those things answered, they should be able to answer, they should be able to call everybody.
You can do it online, it's easy.
If they have a computer, some of the poorer people don't have computers, you know, you don't have it. So, and you know, something Renee told me, that Acxiom has got a program for people 70 or older who can get a, what's it called? A hotspot, mobile hotspot tablet, and the first 90 days is free, and they'll give you